Hey, good evening, everybody. How you doing tonight? Hello. We have a public hearing on three ordinances that were read for the first reading last week. And before we start the council meeting, we're gonna have that public hearing real quick. So it's gonna be on ordinances 1173, 1174, 1175. So the first public hearing will be on ordinance 1173. Excuse me. Concerning amending Chapter 25, Article 5, Planning Commission. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, and Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Section 33 and 34 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend Chapter 25, Article 5, Planning Commission. So is anybody here in the audience this evening to speak on 1173? Actually, I do have one person signed up, Ms. Carrie Parsons. Good evening, Ms. Parsons. Welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Carrie Parsons, at Segow Street. Council President, Mayor, Council Members, fellow citizens in the audience, and also at home. Regarding the proposed changes to ordinance 1173 relating to Chapter 25, Article 5 of the Planning Commission. Adam, thank you so much for reading my email the other week. I hope it was beneficial. I also did not locate any additional mention of excessio in the code. In my opinion, that could cause any further confusion or possible conflict. Council Members, Mayor, Directors, Citizens, the email I'm referring to discuss the proposed changes to which the City Council is removing one of its members from the commission as excessio. However, by removing 25-23, Section B, in its entirety, it could create a conflict with 25-24, Section A. 25-24, Section A states, "The commission shall review all applications for amendments to the zoning texts and maps and report the commission's findings and recommendations." Any recommendations can be stated to the ex officio member during the Planning Commission hearing, or the Planning Commission can take an official vote on recommendations to the Mayor and City Council. If you could kindly excuse my ignorance with some of the proper procedures within the Planning Commission, the Director of Planning and how it's being presented. So in previous council meetings, we would get the report. It's usually a brief overview, how many permits were approved, vague information submitted of development proposals, and so forth. So what I'm kind of asking is, with these proposed changes, am I to assume the Planning Commission will not be performing a lot of these final approvals? But we're gonna be seeing them here, maybe in the form of what it is on the agenda, but something similar to like one of the licensing agreements that's being presented. Is that information gonna come on over now into this body for citizens' awareness? But that was the only section that I did find a confusion. I did send it to you. I hope you guys can make the possible corrections so that way we will not have some confusion. So thank you, Mayor, Council President, Council Members.
Thank you. We are still on ordinance 1173. Concerning amending Chapter 25, Article 5, Planning Commission. Any further comments from citizens in the audience? Any comments from council? Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Carrie Parsons, for coming forward and having concerns regarding the direction of the Planning Commission. Yes, it's true, we are making changes in regards to the fact that as a ex officio member, aka the council liaison, will no longer have voting privileges. It is not accurate for me to sit in a meeting and have everyone, like give their direction and me to vote on it before I present it to my council members. So I am stepping back, allowing for our planning commission to make decisions and present it to the council, and that's what we are here for, to allow me to step back and to observe, and then present it to my council members as recommendations from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Council. Thank you, Councilwoman Shenegas. Any other comments from council? Sir. We are under public hearing for ordinance 1173. Good evening. May we have your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor. Kirk Smith, 840 at Segow Street, Havertide Grace, Maryland, 21078. Thank, I know you didn't, under Roberts' rules, you didn't have to take me. Thank you, Council President for motioning, and the mayor for calling me up. You're my elected council member for this seat. Elected. Yeah, I would rather you have a voice.
Yes, thank you.
Same for the rest of you guys. That's why I keep voting. So that your specific impact on these commissions and committees, especially yours, Councilmember Boyer, is noted and guaranteed, because you're our voice on a lot of them. And your vote matters to me. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir. Good evening, sir. Welcome. Well, Councilmember, former Councilmember Miller, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone, evening, whatever time of day it is. My name is Jim Miller. I live at 320 Lewis Street, down by the former hospital property. I don't think this is a good idea that the council representative on the Planning Commission give up their voice. That position is representative from the council, usually on the planning committee, that attends those meetings with the planning committee, represents the mayor and council at the Planning Commission meeting. And by giving up that voice and vote, you're not doing us any good. You know, the council has already gutted the duties of the Planning Commission by taking away a lot of the duties on the last couple ordinances that were passed. And by giving away your duties here, that's just wrong. If you don't want to do the job, step down and let someone else be appointed.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your comment. However, I'm not stepping down. All I am doing is allowing for the voice of the Planning Commission to be heard. They are not hearing my voice and expecting them to follow suit, okay? When I am at a Planning Commission, I am an ear. I am listening to the voice of the Planning Commission. I am not telling them how to vote. I am listening to the 6.5 people that are on our commission telling their perspective, and then I will take it back to the council. I am stepping back from having a vote, because I do not vote in the planning commission meeting to verify that I have an opinion, okay? That represents our council. I am listening. I am an ear for the voice of the people, and you need to respect that. And we are changing the commission because we need to. It's time, okay? Times change, and all of our commissions no longer have a voting member on the commission. We have stepped back to listen to the people. Please understand that. I appreciate what you're having to say. Thank you very much.
Well, according to what used to be called Article 66B, which is now the land use article, which covers it, the member of the board or council has a vote according to that law. That's the Maryland law. Now, you're, by giving it up, you're giving away that power that the state has applied on you. Don't come back and argue with me. This is comments from citizens. You've already expressed that you don't want to do your job.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, I want to hear the people. I want to hear-
You have a vote on the Planning Commission, and you should do that vote. The only thing that says you should abstain for is if you have a vested interest in the property or something coming up.
Very true. Sometimes when I am voting, wait, come back, sir.
Councilmember Shenegas.
What, hold on.
Will this lead us to public citizen comments?
This is not discussion of public business with the citizen. This is my opinion, letting you know how I feel, and other people that are afraid to get up here and talk. But it's spelled out in the land use article what your duties are supposed to be, and by giving them away, you're wrong.
But before you leave, sir, thank you. Okay, well, those of you that are sitting in the audience, that choose to listen to him and me, understand that I do want to hear the voice of the people, and I'm not giving up my spot on the Planning Commission. We're at a season where there's change, and I want to hear what the people have to say. I want to take back what the Planning Commission has to say to our council without me making one vote. It's very clear, so please understand that it's a time of change, and I know this is public hearing. And oftentimes, us as council members, we do not talk. We sit and listen to the community. But I just want to give back and say, I heard what you had to say, Mr. Miller, Mr. Smith, Ms. Parsons. Thank you very much. But you too sometimes need to listen to us council members. We have a lot to say too. We listen to you very much, and it's time that you listen to us. Thank you.
Any further comments from council? Not any further comments, we'll now go and close public hearing on ordinance 1173. Time is 7:13. We're gonna go to a public hearing on ordinance 1174. Ordinance 1174 concerning amending Chapter 25, Article 8, Youth Commission. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, and Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Section 33 and 34 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend Chapter 25, Article 8, Youth Commission. Are any citizens here this evening to speak on ordinance 1174? Any comments from the council? Okay. Without any further, without comments from citizens or comments from the council, I will now close public hearing on ordinance 1174. Time is now 7:15. We're gonna go to public hearing on ordinance 1175 concerning amending Chapter 25, Article 9, Independent State Commission. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, and Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertide Grace City Charter to amend Chapter 25, Article 9, Independent State Commission. Anybody here today to speak on ordinance 1175? Any comments from council? And any comments from council? We will now, we will now close 1175. The time is 7:15. Okay, everybody ready for the council meeting? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is February 18, 2025. The time is now 7:15 PM. I now call the roll for the regularly scheduled council meeting. Council President, Ring Sager.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
All council members are present and accounted for. Everybody, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance at opening prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I could ask everyone to kindly remain standing. It always gives me a great honor and pleasure to call forward Reverend Gene Proud of the Proud Evangelistic Association.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have three things to say first. Peace, peace, peace. Blessings on you, council members, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, physical. We declare healing over you. Your voice, and your throat, and everything else that's going on with it. We declare healing in Jesus' name over you. We declare over all the members of the council, wisdom, patience, knowledge. And that you always listen to hear what's best for all the members of the city. So that all the members of the- So that all the members of the city can have the best of lives. We ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Reverend Proud, can you hang on for one second? I wanted to actually-
Yeah, I swallowed that, but I didn't know what you wanted.
I don't want you to leave. I want you to stay right there.
Okay. I think I'm in trouble. Big trouble.
Yep.
Do you mind standing here for a second? Everybody, recede if you want to reconstand something. Anyway, I just, I know I'm throwing this on you last second. It's kind of a little bit of surprise. But, you know, the, well, I imagine even way longer since I ever got on council in 2008. You know, there's always been a, an opening prayer here at the city council chambers. I mean, it doesn't matter what faith. It just, you know, we always believe a, you know, a good direction and a strong wind, you know, will help us carry the evening. And for, for many years now, you, you've come here and you've filled in for your role, and you've even filled in when some people couldn't make it. And I know that you, you've had a steady hand with, with the ministerium, and we're always happy to see you here. I mean that. You know, I don't want, I don't want you ever to think, you know, why I come too much or things like that. Like, we're very happy to have you here. Your words are always spot on and timely, and I think you reflect the community a lot with, with your approach and the things you say and the things you pray for, for us. And I just want to thank, he's a school teacher. I remember asking you for some snow back in the fall. And so we maxed out our snow days, and I want to thank you for that, you know, but we don't want any more. So I noticed-
Yeah, and you're not getting it.
Yeah, so this, you know, what was supposed to be the storm in the center went to the south, so that's good. So now we don't have to work until the third week of June. But anyway, everything is, is in God's hands, and we want to thank you. So if you wouldn't mind, the council and I were thinking, we were talking about you the other day, and we were talking about how much we enjoy your prayers and just seeing you here. And, and folks who tune in on a regular basis know what I'm talking about with Reverend Proud here. So just a quick little recognition, I just want to, from us to you, how we just want to thank you for your service. I know it's been a very difficult year for you personally as well. So just want to say, City Havertide Grace recognition, Reverend Gene Proud. Whereas Reverend Gene Proud has been providing the prayer at city council meetings since November 6, 2017. Whereas Reverend Gene Proud through the subsequent ministerium organizes the clergy to offer prayer at each city council meeting. And whereas Reverend Gene Proud has served others selflessly through the years. Now therefore, I, William T. Martin, Mayor of City Havertide Grace, along with the members of the city council proudly recognize you for your many years of service and continued service to our city. Thank you very much, sir. Yes, sir.
You guys are embarrassing me.
I don't think anything can embarrass you, sir, but we appreciate it. Thank you, Reverend.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I do have an amendment to the agenda for this evening. Due to some changes we want to see before it comes up for a vote, right into the record and the open, the work session we have next week, we're going to pull Item 13B, the fee schedule, from this agenda. That doesn't mean that I don't want to hear you guys talk about it or anything, but we're going to pull it from this, and we're going to discuss the wanted changes at the work session next Wednesday.
Any objections from the council to remove ordinance Item 13B?
No objections.
Objection? Okay. Ordinance Item 13B is removed from this evening's agenda. All right, Council President, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
We're going to go to Item 5, Approval of the Minutes, the city council meeting minutes of February 3, 2025. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Boger, second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Sir. Okay. Thank you very much, Council President. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. City council meeting minutes of February 3, 2005 are approved 5-0 in affirmative. Item B, City Council Close Session Minutes, February 3, 2025. Councilmember Robertson, who was filling in for Council President. Do you have something you need to read in the record?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. The vote from the closed session on February 3, 2025 pertaining to Director of Planning Separation from Employment. Action taken. Public disclosure of the vote to be kept confidential for 30 days. Motion by Councilmember Robertson, second by Councilmember Boger. Motion passes 5-0 in the affirmative.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. And council, can I have a motion to approve what Councilmember Robertson just said?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boger, second by Councilmember Boyer. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Close session minutes for February 3, 2025 are approved 5-0 in affirmative. Okay, thank you, council. We're going to go to Item 6 this evening. Comments from citizens. This is the part of this evening's agenda. If you are here to speak on a matter that's on the agenda, now's the time to do so. Or if you're here because you want to speak about another matter of city business, now's the time to do so as well. So normally what I do is if anyone filled out a pre, if someone filled out a form online or here outside the door, I'll call on those citizens first. And once that happens, I'll open up the floor at large. All you got to do is just raise your hand, be recognized, and you can come up and speak to the council. So I have, I have Ms. Ms. Carrie Parsons. Welcome back, Ms. Parsons. I have two forms filled out, but I'm sure feel free to go ahead and talk about both of them.
Thank you, Mayor, Council President, council citizens here and also at home. So the first topic is Chapter 102 Sustainable, or Landscaping Sustainable. So in the proposed, adding the additional section to 102-3 subsection C, in my personal opinion, it's confusing. It also contradicts Chapter 169 Storm Water Management. In Chapter 102-3 subsection B, it states already, "To the extent possible inconsistent with this subsection properties being redeveloped shall meet the landscaping requirements of this chapter." However, under the proposed subsection C, it states, "A landscape plan will not be required if the project is not a redevelopment, but merely a change in use permitted under city zoning code," so on and so forth, and Section 102-6 and 102-7 are followed. For your reference, Section 102-6 is regarding the existing tree preservation and protection, and 107 is regarding plant material. It further goes on to redevelopment in the, in the definition. So what I'm a little confused on is when I was reading other areas within our city code, it appears that the proposed subsection C could contradict Chapter 169 Storm Water Management. It appears Chapter 169 is tied with sections, or with sections within Maryland 378, also other Maryland manuals, and within Chapter 169, it does mention and defines redevelopment. Now, when I was comparing the two definitions, the proposed is almost identical as Chapter 169. However, the only difference is one small portion, and it states, "Existing site impervious areas exceeding 40%." Otherwise, they're identical. Which I stated, that existing site impervious area exceeds 40% is in Chapter 169 Storm Water Management. In my personal opinion, majority of Chapter 102 and 169 mirrors a lot of what's already in the Maryland 378, the designs, the land sections, and they have extensive definitions of what redevelopment is. And in our 16, in Chapter 169, in my personal opinion, we have already, we have condensed it down to a nice version of what's stated in all those manuals. I realize you're trying to ease the restrictions possibly with redevelopment along the Route 40 corridor, amongst other things. However, the one thing we can all agree upon is storm water management. The city, citizens, we've all invested millions of dollars in grant money, personal time, city employee time, so on and so forth, improving various areas, our living shoreline, Lily Run, all of it to impact and mitigate storm water. So in addition, you've also taken great strides to say no to invasive species throughout Chapter 120, 102 by promoting native plants and trees. Again, in my personal opinion, when reading all of those, all of those manuals and within Maryland Storm Water Landscape Section, my theory is the 40% impervious area benchmark that they've identified also is an opportunity for the municipalities to incorporate storm water management through landscape during a redevelopment process. I respectfully ask and request that the council reconsider's this proposed ordinance change. Otherwise, properties under redevelopment, especially along the Route 40 corridor and in other locations, will not take into account storm water management in those areas that we've already strived so hard to improve upon. Thank you for your time in that chapter. Council President, I know that you've pulled it from the agenda. Do you mind if I have, if I say a few words regarding fees?
Absolutely. It's citizen comments.
Thank you, sir. And I greatly appreciate humoring me. And I do appreciate everything that the city has put in regarding updating the fee schedule. I know it was pulled from the agenda. However, it is a popular topic that people do not want to ever bring up in front of citizens. I'm frugal, so to see an increase in fees, to me, well, it makes me really angry. It makes me angry. I'm paying more on top of taxes to the city, to the state. But there's a few things, as a citizen, that I've taken time to read the charter and the city code and what's going on in the state. And that almost every single thing that you improve, that you have put an increase on corresponds either directly or indirectly within our code. Personally, I received a stop work knock on the door during my project a couple of years ago before Mom passed. And I'm thankful because during an inspection, an employee noticed something. And they brought it to the planning or to the permitting office and over to Public Works, and they came over and they said, you've got a problem. That cut my contractor honest. That fee for a permit saved a lot of work down the line, and it kept my contractor honest. Some of these increases, yeah, they're going to impact us as property owners. Whether we hire a contractor or not, it will affect future developments. But the reality is that people do not see, it's the time and the effort. Each department, our city employees, inspectors invest in everything that comes to them. The increase in some of those fees, sir, pays for that city employee to perform a task for an event on their scheduled day off. It offsets the utility consumption, water, electric, waste disposal. So, or to simply the little extras. Police involvement to protect us during events. Those cost increases to those venues, I mean, I have been vocal about this numerous times. Each event in the downtown area or at one of the city-owned buildings, they all come through. We all see a cost sheet. So in those estimated cost sheets, sheets, some of those fees, in my opinion, are finally starting to align with those estimates. We're finally aligning with what our employees time the effort. Some of those fees are finally aligning to what they do. Financially, it's not going to cause a negativity in our budget. I know the price increases, it's a necessary evil. But sometimes we have to look beyond those necessary evils and really look at what our employees, Public Works, Police Department, all of them are doing. And it's a lot of time, and sometimes they're able to stop a problem before it happens by having an inspector out, looking at a plan before you get that pool put in, and they're finding a problem before it becomes a major problem. So I thank you, sir. That was a lot of work. I thank the staff that did, you know, did all the cross-referencing. I didn't find anything because I looked at every line, and it all lines up within the code. And I truly thank whoever took a lot of time invested in doing a lot of that. So thank you. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. So that's, oh, I have, actually, I have two more, sorry. Same gentleman, Captain Rick Wall.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Captain Rick Wall, Havertide Grace U.S. Sailing, 329 bounding home court, Havertide Grace.
Welcome.
So I had a, a big plan to have stuff on the screen, and that didn't work out tonight. So I printed you a hard copy out there and a picture's worth a thousand words. So now you're going to hear the thousand words instead of seeing the picture. So first, I'd like to say, you know, our vision for Havertide Grace U.S. Sailing program is to breathe the preeminent sailing program on the north end of the Chesapeake Bay. And I would tell you, we're probably there. We're doing it. And so on that end, to you, Mr. Mayor, council, members of the, the city directorates, thank you for making our program successful because without your support to us, we're not able to perform in, in, in the park during the summer. We have a robust staff that is excited for the season coming up. If you're at all interested in becoming a, a board director with our staff, we have room on the board. So, you know, reach out to us if you think you'd like to help us on the, on the program. The next thing I talk about is on the, the next slide, Slide number three, I believe it is. And that's our program. We did a test pilot in 2016. For some of you that were involved with the city then, we had five students just as a trial to see how everything worked out, and it was fantastic. I've, I've sat down last night with dinner with my wife, and I counted on my fingers, and we're approaching our 10th year of doing our summer camp here in Havertide Grace. And so again, you'll hear me say this throughout my conversation with you tonight, is thank you for your support. I have a timeline there. 2016, we started with four boats. 2017, we went up to 15 boats. 2018, we hired a part-time camp director to help us manage the camp. We had 119 students that year going through the camp. And as time went by in 2018- And as time went by in twenty eighteen, again, you heard me say it already once, twice, thanks to city, city bought some new docks and put in, and it made a huge difference to our operation. That partnership that we have with you, with the owners of Tidewater Marina and Bob Brandon, with the adjacent property to Hutchins Park, make our camp possible, so thank you for that. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, we grew, we got more boats, we got new instructors. Twenty twenty-three, we changed our program. We learned that one-week camps didn't work for sailing. We could teach a kid how to sail, he'd come back the second week, we'd teach him how to sail again. So, we changed our program up, and we went to a two-week program where we bring a kid in on the first week, we teach him to sail, the second week, we take him out and let him have fun with the boat. We still do the, the seven and eight-year-old camp, one week long for the younger kids, that hasn't changed. And in twenty twenty-three, we did our first performance camp where we had sailors that had sailed a couple of seasons come back, and we took them through the drills of racing and conducted a week of racing with the kids out in the Susquehanna here in Havity Grace. Twenty twenty-four, we fully implemented that two-week program. We still, like I said, we do the one-week for the seven and eight-year-olds, that hasn't changed. In twenty twenty-three, four, we had a hundred and thirty-five kids. Previous year, we had a hundred and seventy, but because we went to a two-week camp, the math didn't work out the same. So, if we take and recalculate the math, and we talk about how many weeks and kids and lessons we taught, instead of a hundred and thirty-five, it comes up to two hundred and fifty. So, again, camp has continued to grow over this ten-year period. We have a variety of boats, we have Opti's, which most people that go to the Olympics learn to sail in. We have a fleet of Excites that last year, we said, "They're too far to use anymore," and we fixed those. And so, as we're going forward, it's time that we're having to start replacing our fleet of boats, just because we're wearing them out. Our new camp director that we hired in twenty twenty-three, she's made a huge difference. She's, comes from a huge sailing background, sailed in college, was a camp director at a couple of different camps around Chesapeake Bay, and she's made a wonderful difference to our camp. And so, with all of that being said, you know, she implemented an advanced sailing skills this last season for some of the kids, and at, after the close of camp with her influence, she's actually had four of our campers go to Baltimore and Annapolis to participate in other sailing events. I wouldn't say representing us, Havity Grace U Sailing, but this is where they're from, and this is where they learned to sail, and so they took that city of Havity Grace with them when they went there, and they signed up for these races. And so, Havity Grace U Sailing and the City of Havity Grace's word now is being moved down to bay, and they know that we exist up here. In twenty twenty-five, this coming season, we have a bunch of stuff planned. We have seven weeks of sailing planned. We're going to do a special camp during the week of Fourth of July. It depends on those snow days, Mr. Mayor, so hopefully you got them held off, and we'll get to start camp on time. Scholarships is one of the things that we pride ourselves on, is there's no kid that can't go sailing if he can't afford it. I would tell you, this year, we've given away three scholarships already. In previous years, we actually have given two scholarships to city employees of Havity Again, I mentioned it already, we're starting the fundraising process this year to start raising funds to replace one of our fleets of eleven boats. The boats cost between five and nine thousand dollars apiece, so you can see, it adds up to a lot of money over time that we're going to have to raise money. All this being said, we couldn't do it without your support, and this year, as in previous years, we have submitted, you know, requests to the city to be in your budget. We hope you find favor on that and fund us at the fullest extent possible so that we can help offset the insurance that we pay. Day one of twenty sixteen, we had a sixteen-hundred-dollar insurance bill. Last year, we had ten thousand seven hundred dollars. And so, your support financially to us helps us pay that insurance bill without keeping our rates from raising. We still do this year, one-week beginner class, we do the two-week, we're going to do a two-week performance class, and then hopefully at the end of camp, we'll have some kids go off somewhere else in Havity Grace. The last slide I have there has a bunch of numbers on it. What I'd ask you to look at is on the very right side of the screen, you'll see a bunch of threes, fours, and sixes. Those are our instructors. Our instructors, we grow them in camp, they come right out of students, and we bring them up into camp and teach them how to be a counselor in training, and then a associate, and then we get them level-one experience. But those numbers there represent the kids that came from our camps that live in Havity Grace. And so, again, we grow sailors here in Havity Grace, and those are our instructors that we're growing. And then the last thing I will leave you with are just a bunch of numbers. To date, nine hundred and fifty-four, or fifty-two kids have gone through our camps. Out of that, three hundred and eleven came from Havity Grace, the biggest population total out of all of the kids coming from wherever, and of those, nine hundred and fifty-two, again, seven hundred and fifty of them came out of Hartford County. We've had a hundred and fifteen from out of county, meaning Baltimore County, Cecil County, that kind of stuff, and we've had a hundred and forty come from out of state, you know, so we're, don't ever think of ourselves as anything but sailors and making young sailors, you know, but we're having an influence on tourism here in Havity Grace, too, by having grandparents bring their kids to Havity Grace, you know, from wherever they are. And we've already got, I think, one kid signed up from Oregon this year, you know, so, again, I'm here just to give you an update on our camp and ask, you know, that when you see our requests on the line item budget and another request that we put in for some repairs to docks down in, to dock to find favor on that as we go forward and open the twenty twenty-five sailing season at Hutchins Park. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
First, I want to thank you so much for, I just love hearing year to year how you grow and how you make this more interesting and, you know, the ultimate goal. So, I talk to people at work all the time about this, but the question that I cannot answer is, so what is the start and stop time?
Nine o'clock in the morning, we start, and then we stop at three, drop off is a little before that and pick up is a little after that. We're there from eight till four, because all of our staff is paid, we have the eight-hour workday that we have to comply with, and so, little before nine, a little after three.
Okay. And wishlist?
Wishlist.
Do you have a, do you have like a, I know you have a wishlist of orders to, to, to money and support from the city, but is there other things that you have on your wishlist?
So, so right now, we have a fleet of boats that we have to replace over the next couple of years, and it's going to be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars, and that we're going to start a fundraising program for. I'm not coming to the city, "Hey, buy me boats." It would be nice, but we need a new dock. We have borrowed a dock from Havity Grace Yacht Basin, and for three years now, I've saying it's going to sink, it's on its last leg, and it is, last winter, I think it was, it broke loose and tore piling out, and the marina folks and DPW put a new piling in, and it's there, but it's still on its last leg, so that dock needs to be replaced, and it's on the list that I gave Dr. Ritchie and talked with the Marina Commission on all of this also.
Okay, and so, what are we going to have an official entry into a race, and when will it be? What is it going to look like, and how do we cheer these kids on?
So, we had, I wouldn't say official entry from Havity Grace U Sailing, but we had four kids go to Baltimore County Sailing Center for a weekend race, and then in Annapolis, at the Annapolis Yacht Club, or one of the marinas down there, they do a Halloween Howl, and we had two kids go down there for that, to rent boats and just race with them, so. When we're going to have one here in Havity Grace, we have talked about that with our Board of Directors. It still hasn't come to fruition yet, because when the Havity, when the Chesapeake Bay Yacht Racing Foundation does their racing for kids in the summer, it conflicts with our camp time, and our instructors would be the coaches that we have to take out of that, but we've talked about hosting one here. We have hosted here in Havity Grace, US Sailing Level-One Instructor Courses, three times. This will be our third time this summer where our staff goes to get certified in teaching sailing, and we, like I say, we've hosted three of those courses.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Robertson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wall. Thanks for all you do. I continue to support this program, I think it's wonderful. Just a couple of things for the viewing audience, so in your fundraising efforts, is there a link on your website that they can go to?
Yes, havitygraceusailing.org is our website, and we have a button for donations on there. Can contact us there, you know, if you have corporate sponsorship and those type of things also.
All right. So, hdgusailing.org, and do you have any fundraisers coming up?
So, we'll come back, I will be back to see you again in the future about our annual fundraiser that we have done in the past in Hutchins Park, Family Picnic, where we invite all the campers from all of our camps down and have a picnic. Last year, we actually did it at the brewery, and then we do a second fundraiser that's, I'll say, a private one with the Havity Grace Yacht Club, that the yacht club hosts for us.
Perfect. Thanks, sir.
Sir.
Yeah, Rick, excellent presentation. Just wanted to verify, if I want to get ahold of you, what's your email address?
So, hdgusailing@gmail.
All right, thank you very much for that, Rick, and again, I apologize, I haven't learned how to sail yet, okay? I keep failing every year, and I'm, I'm sorry to be a returning customer, but I'm an Army guy.
We, we have a one-week, seven and eight-year-old camp for you.
Thank you, Rick.
You need a bigger boat, though, right?
Hey. Any other questions?
Comment? Thank you, Captain Wall. I appreciate that you're coming out year by year to represent the sailing club. From day one, when I had an opportunity to meet with you and your staff and the program, you have showed an exemplary program. You work well with our DPW and with the Marina Commission. Thank you so much for bringing forward your needs and for, you know, letting us know about your fundraisers, letting us know that, you know, you are supporting Havity Grace citizens, also the Hartford County citizens, and tourism abroad. So, thank you, and I think you're doing a great job, keep, you know, plugging away at what you're doing. You go out there every year in the summer. We know that you're a part of our community, and the kids are happy, and I just hope that we can continue to serve you. If there's something that, you know, we miss and we're not, you know, meeting eye-to-eye, please come forward with the Marina Commission, with our council, and, you know, we'll direct you in how we can help you support your mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Captain Rick, thank you. You know, I've always been a big fan of your organization, you're one of my favorite nonprofits here in the city. You know, we look forward to looking at your requests and seeing, again, how the city can assist your program, and again, you provide services to a lot of kids in Havity Grace, a lot of kids in Hartford County. A good friend of mine lives on the Mason-Dixon Line in Pilesville, his kid comes every year, Brian Dougherty, I know, you know, students.
I've got his name on a list, I'm sure.
Yep, I mean, he's like, so, they live on a farm, and he tells me all the time, he's like, "Where else would I ever expose my kid to sailing?"
Right.
And they live, you know, far away from the water, so what you do, I think, is not just, you know, it benefits kids in Havity Grace, but kids everywhere, and that's what, that's what, you know, be us, being a city on the water is all about, is how we can help, help the youth and help our community. So, again, thanks for coming here and updating us on your success of last year, and again, we look forward to working with you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council. Dr. Ritchie, sorry for taking so long.
Well, that's kind of a nice segue. My name's Carl Fokler. I'm president of the Chesapeake Heritage Conservancy, Mr. Mayor, president, and esteemed council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all this evening. I notice that we do have the lease for the Martha Lewis, the skipjack Martha Lewis, on the, on the agenda as a resolution or to pass here today, or to be considered. I do want to say that I do have two additional board members here, President, Ms. Rick Pearson and Ms. Vivian behind me here, who are, who are present, but I do want to say in regards to Mr. Wa, Captain Wall, is that Martha came up last, late last spring, early summer, and, you know, we got to, as we were continuing, as we're continuing to work on Martha and get her ready with her COI, that we did have the opportunity to see the, the school, the, or sailing school in action on a regular basis, and it's a fantastic little program that they've got going on, and it's not that little, I mean, the kids are all, you know, it's just a great thing to do, and sailing is, you know, it binds you and ties you with, with the bay, which is what, you know, Havity Grace, you know, is obviously benefits from and contributes to. So, but Martha, on the other end of the spectrum, the bigger boat, right, she's a fifty-five-foot skipjack and oyster dredging vessel. She was active here in Havity Grace back in the early to mid nineties, she was restored at Conquered Point, for those of you that who don't know, and then she operated, again, as a living classroom, so she's a five-oh-one-C-three, she operates as a living classroom during the time period, to my understanding, I wasn't involved with it back then, but she had eight to ten thousand schoolkids that went out on her decks and, and went out to the flats and conducted science experiments, tested the water, would throw out and see what's, what they brought into the water, all kinds of different stormwater types of projects and whatnot to, to educate the kids and also teach them about the ecology and so forth. And what's kind of neat about the, the program when it's actually operating is, is that half the kids go out on the boat and experiences actually putting up the sails and sailing and, and doing the experiments and tests and whatnot, and the other half, of course, goes, if they're in Havity Grace, they may go to the, to the, to the lockhouse, they might go to the decoy museum, they might go to the Maritime Museum, and so forth and so on, so they, it's great because we get to work with and partner with other existing nonprofits, and it helps to promote their programs as well. Right now, where Martha stands is Martha's currently up in northeast for the winter, and she, and I've had a couple of conversations with Mr. Ritchie about it, she's, she's been historically, I think, she was originally down at, I believe, down at the, the city marina, and then during the latter part, and I guess in the later, early two thousand, she was at Hutchins Park where she currently is, but we couldn't leave her there for the, for the winter. Original plan, we were going to take her back down to Cambridge. She was in Cambridge for about three to four years, she underwent about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar restoration project. She had her, her whole starboard sod rebuilt, she had her decks torn out and rebuilt, she had her fore and aft cabins rebuilt, the strong backs were replaced, the centerboard encasements were replaced. She has a brand-new mast, which is a lovely thing, which I'm sure you guys remember, we did, we did have a mast originally, but it wasn't, the mast that we had gotten was infested by bugs and so forth, but now we have a wonderful mast. So, where we are right now is, we're going to be taking her back down to Cambridge in March, because we have to, we have to haul her out for, well, we've got to paint the bottom, it's kind of a spring overhaul, but we have to do a final inspection with the COI with the Coast Guard. It's a certificate of inspection that we need to get before we can start to operate at full capacity, because when she's operating, she could take out over thirty, thirty folks on the decks between the kids and, and crew and so forth. Have any of you been out on Martha previously? Nobody here has been out on Martha? One person's been out. I haven't been.
Years ago.
You, you, years ago? I've never been, you know, out on Martha as she was operating as a living classroom. Been out on her plenty of times since, but I'm looking forward to getting out on her and getting her back into the mission and working with the schools and the classrooms, whether it's private or public schools and so forth. We plan, our plan on, our plan is to, is to, at this point in time, is to make her an ambassador of the bay, so she's going to be bumping between Havity Grace, northeast. We're hoping, we're working right now, we have a request out with the Amtrax, open the bridge, because we'd like to get her on the upper side of the, of the Susquehanna for, just for, for a short period, for about a month. We want to get her up to Perryville. for, just for, for a short period, for about a month. We want to get her up to Perryville and Port Deposit. But also, we want her there for the lockhouse has their big wine event. And they've invited us in the past to participate. They have a small dock there. So that would be at the tail end. I think that's around May 10th and so forth. But it's kind of nice, again, sharing and between the two counties and also kind of being a bridge between the two counties as well. I think is very important. But at Hutchins Park, and we've also talked about this. Hutchins Park is a great location, particularly with, with the, the parking and the restrooms and so forth. But it, it was very, very difficult this year as the sailing school was talking about floating docks and so forth. Ideally, a floating dock is, would be best for Martha because it's very, very difficult. She's, she's tucked in just on the inside of the fishing pier right now and it's very, very difficult and almost somewhat dangerous, I would say, getting on and off the boat, particularly for, whether it's younger kids or older kids, or if you have certain issues and whatnot. And I know that there have been discussions about Hutchins Park, the, the end of the dock perhaps getting rebuilt or extended or some improvements out there. But when you do that, I hope that you might consider extending it enough to, to sufficiently accommodate Martha because it's also very difficult when we, when we pull the boat in, it sticks, I mean, I'd say over half of it sticks out beyond the last piling, which makes it, makes it awkward to, awkward to back in, but it's also awkward to tie off and so forth securely. And I know we had to cut ourselves in this past spring to get, to get access in and off. But I'd also, so I'd like the, the council to consider when, when those designs are being made, that they perhaps make it to, to accommodate Martha's 70-foot length, more or less, if possible. Additionally, when we're operating, it would be very, very helpful if, I've spoken with Mr. Ritchie about this, but it would be very helpful, like the Pride ties up on the outside of the fishing pier at Hutchins Park. And it would, when we go, because Martha, when she operates, part of the mission is, is obviously taking out kids in classrooms and that's during school days and so forth. But also on weekends, taking, taking out passengers as a kind of a sightseeing tour for an hour, two-hour tours and whatnot. But it's very difficult to come in and then have to back her in. I mean, because it takes some time. It'd be much easier for us and we'd be much more efficient if we'd be able to pull into that front pier, the front of the fishing pier, very similar to the Pride of Baltimore, so that we could load and unload. Because when we operate like that, we probably would do two to three different operations for, for passengers, for the hour, two-hour cruise, whatever that might be. So that's kind of, we talk about wish lists, that's kind of a thing. We'd also like the council to consider, for example, like when you have events at, at Conquered, or at Conquered Point and so forth, whether or not we'd be able to, to pull Martha out to the end of the pier at that particular location so that, again, she could be, you know, whether she's taking people out or whether or not she's a static attraction and whatnot. Because I think, you know, no matter where Martha goes, people that, you know, there's always people that, that have been out on her and they come up and they're always very, very excited with the positive experiences. And many of them are now, you know, older adults with kids of their own who, who were taken out as schoolkids back in the day and the fond core memories that they have. And that's, that's the payback that, that Martha gives, much like the sailing schools and teaching kids, getting kids out on the water. Because many, many people don't have that opportunity. But, you know, Martha is that stage and that platform where, where those kind of things can happen. So we would love to see, you know, we want to continue our relationship and I'm happy, I'm happy to see that the board is considering a new lease with Martha for another year. We hope to have the COI by, by the summertime so we'll be able to operate. We do not anticipate taking schoolkids out this particular spring, but hopefully by next fall, we can, we may not be on the public school, but we, we should be starting with, with private schools or public schools that can, can, you know, can take advantage of it. So we're going to be getting to the good stuff, which has been, I know it's been a long time coming, Mayor. I know that. And, but I think we're, we're right there. So we're really excited about it. And any support, I know this board used to, you know, provide grants to Martha many years ago. And, and, you know, I haven't asked this board for, for any money. And I'm not going to at this point in time either. I want to, I want Martha to prove her worth to the city and that we're, we're going to, we're going to fulfill our duties, not only to Martha, but the kids in Hartford and Cecil County. So I appreciate your opportunity. And we are having, we are having a fundraiser coming up, if anybody's, and I may send out an invitation, electronic invitation to y'all, but coming up in northeast at the VFW on March 23rd, which I think is a Sunday from two to, two to four. But we need, because we do need money. We all know, as the sailing school mentioned, I mean, insurance just crushes. You know, it's crushing. And it, and our insurance is, I don't know, I think it's about 15,000 to 16,000 a year right now, which is significant for, particularly for a nonprofit. So, anyway, we greatly appreciate your support and we look forward to, again, a, a great, a great voting season this year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We're still under item six, comments from citizens, and that's all the pre-filled out forms I have. So please raise your hand. Be recognized if you have something to say to the council. Good evening and welcome. May we please have your name and address for the record?
Hello, I'm Charlie Mike, 1413 Superior Street in Havity Grace. Thank you. Again, tip for the cap to Sailing School and to Martha. Both of those are very, very honorable and worthy Havity Grace institutions, which I'm going to speak about the budget in a minute or two, but hopefully you find money in that budget to support both of these endeavors. Couple of things I want to talk about. Number one, I want to commend Dan Wisnich and the Water and Sewer Commission on another outstanding report that's, he'll be given here shortly. I don't want to take up any of his thunder or time, but I just want to recognize that was a great report. I truly hope that all of you thoroughly read this report and recognize some of the numbers and some of the observations that are in it. And then hopeful that this report, as in prior years, will help you in curbing some of the misspending of our government funds and the balance of our loans for the Water and Sewer Commission. So it's a great report. Look forward to hearing it from Dan and I might comment on it later in time. Second, I'm going to talk about, I've talked about before up here, you only have a few months to go before the budget for 2026 is due. I'm asking again, as a taxpaying citizen, to address the money problems at the Star Center. And I propose three different areas you can go with this. Number one, it's hard, we need to have a distinct line item for expenses and revenues for the Star Center only. Not with cities, festivals, or the Opera House, but the Star Center only. So we all can see the profit or loss in that. It's too hard to try and differentiate the money going in to all the other events because you got it all rolled into one on your budget. I've asked numerous times with Mr. Abbe over here, and he's helped me very much trying to understand how much is there. Number two, another area to go would be to create the Enterprise Fund, which I brought up before. Not including the Opera House, but the Enterprise Fund. The Opera House is a city-owned facility that we all voted for and donated money to, to operate. The Star Center is a, something different. If we're going to be in the entertainment business, then we need to operate it properly. Third thing would be, if, if that, if you insist on being in the entertainment business, then lease out this facility to a real professional entertainment management company. Let them have all the headaches with it. But we are spending way too much money, which could be going to DPW, could be going to the Sailing School or a Martha Lewis, could be going to a lot of areas. But the money we're spending on that is terrible. Last thing I want to comment on is, there's two ordinances on, on your agenda tonight, on C and D. Until the city hires a new planning director and lets him or her get up to speed on the charter and zoning regulations, these changes and these ordinance should not be presented. It appears that these two items were at the center of the ethics complaint, which you dealt with a couple of months ago. And you don't need to be digging into this until you have a planning director who can look at what's going on and decide. So I think those things, those two items should not be discussed. My opinion. I'll leave it up to your council. But council, again, I remind you, as I have in the past, you represent me. You represent the city, the citizens, okay? So when we speak, you say you hear, but I want to see you act. So there's my comments. And if you have any comments, I'd like to hear them.
Thank you. We also like to speak to the council this evening. Sir. Welcome back, Mr. Smith.
As the Martha Lewis guy stated, what a great segue I just got from Charlie Kirk. We watch on TV. We attend when we can and especially when we're not sick. Because we don't want to infect any of the voting body that we elected. That chair's been empty now for eight to 10 weeks. And frankly, it's one of the best things to listen to besides the economic report and a financial report and the DPW. Okay, so there's a lot of good reports coming from that section. Is what I'm trying to say. And at times, the city council has seen fit and proper and actually smart to fill that chair with the likes of Ms. Diane Claire, city planner. She's smart, sophisticated, intelligent, and most importantly, she's not a rogue bureaucrat. I read that. Get her in. Let's put her up there. And you may not even have to look for another city planner. She almost single-handedly put together the entire combined plan that's coming up. I'm telling you, that woman's mind is incredible. I like working with her, especially when it comes to planning out this city's future. Now, because we don't have like an item 20 or anything anymore, you've been hearing me occasionally put out stuff. This is kind of like that. For the good of the city and the residents, I have some advice and I'd like to share it. This weekend, 22nd and 23rd, is the time to get your tomato seeds into your trays and your pepper seeds too. Because you have about 12 to 14 weeks before you can actually get them out in the ground, right around Mother's Day. Even with climate change, you still don't want to put them out unless you're a risk taker like me. Okay? So don't. On that, peas, the old adage, and this goes back to the Reverend and all the other pastors here, plant peas after St. Patrick's Day. Doesn't apply anymore. Climate change, this is a beneficial perk of living in Maryland and the planet overall getting warmer. As soon as the soil temperature hits 40 to 55 degrees or basically as soon as you can stick your finger down into it, you can drop a pea seed in the ground. And as long as you got the proper preparations, your trellising, strings, whatever else you need, that pea seed will germinate at a rate of about 78%. So you're going to get 78 out of 100 or seven out of eight. Okay? And you will be shucking peas at a city council meeting sometime around June here, right near.
I think we just deviated from the agenda, did we not?
It's not time to plant them yet. Lastly, alliums. I like to watch them grow. Bees love them, especially when we let them go to flower. Don't do that. Well, maybe one. We got to take care of the bees too. Maybe two. Okay? But garlic, onions, and shallots can be planted indoors now, the seeds. However, it is not, I don't recommend doing this because they're not going to get big enough and strong enough in the root section to survive a transplant anymore. If you want to do that, you should have did it around Groundhog Day. Okay? My recommendation is you put them out in the soil somewhere around, guess, guess when? St. Patrick's Day. Any questions? If you need to know soil, I've invited you all in the past. Come out because that is the one thing that we were given governance over, the soil and the critters. So this is your chance to shine and the price of groceries ain't coming down anytime soon. Any questions?
You want to come over and get the deer out of my yard?
Sure. Let's get hunting licenses and roll back that regulation that doesn't allow you and me to hunt inside the city limits with weapons of mass destruction. No, with guns. I have perfect, I have the perfect amount of ammo to take care of most problems like that in town.
My dogs are failing me because they got all my tomatoes, all my peppers, all my daughters' strawberries, everything last year in one night.
Kidding, I just want to help the mayor grow pumpkins.
Yeah. He's always pretty good at that. I'll try. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, Councilmember Shenegas.
Mr. Smith, thank you so much for your kind comments about Diane Claire. She has been a wonderful asset to the planning department and has worked hard on the comprehensive plan. That's up to her if she wants to step into the shoes of someone else. But thank you for blessing her. She's amazing.
She could be right here giving us our two-week briefings and it's been almost 10 weeks. So please bring her up. I'm going to reiterate that, by the way. Intelligent, well-spoken, sophisticated, knowledgeable, and not a rogue bureaucrat.
But absolutely a blessing to the planning department, the city of Havity Grace. So thank you so much.
She should be recognized with her own plaque. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wish to address council? Any comments from the council members? Councilman Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in reference to one of our speakers this evening, one of the items of next week's work session, it's February 26th, we'll be discussing fees at large, but that includes Star Center operations. So I encourage members of the public to attend that work session. I believe that's six o'clock at the Star Center. Yes, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I was going to actually say this under my comments later in the evening, but the empty planning director chair was brought up a couple of times. And we do have an acting planning director. We recalled a gentleman who was our planning director for a couple of years. I don't know, 2017, 2018, maybe. Mr. Ben Martirana, who is our acting planning director. He agreed to come back on a temporary role until we find his replacement. But one of the deals I made with Ben, Ben's an early riser and he's early to bed. And for, for health reasons and other things, he said, Mayor, I'll do everything you ask. I just, I can't stay up past late enough to go to council meetings. So I said to Ben, well, just give us a report if there's anything to report. But we do have a planning director. And I assure you, the city with or without a planning director is extremely capable enough to write planning ordinances between my planning staff, the city attorney, and the council members. So thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item seven, appointments. Yes, sir.
Just because of the, do you mind a quick five-minute bathroom break?
Okay, no problem. Any objections until bathroom break?
Oh, good point.
Yep, we'll go ahead. We'll wait to, we'll do it right after the appointment, right? So let's go ahead and bring in Mr. Timmons here. So Councilmember Jones.
Yes, Mayor. I move to appoint Thomas Timmons to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second?
At most by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Shenegas. This is the appointment, Mr. Thomas Timmons, the Historic Preservation Commission. Questions or comments? Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need to take a second. This gentleman, if you come to the Legion and check out the museum any Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00, he's one of the faces that you'll see there most often. And he's really divin, dove into the history of Havity Grace and the people that live here now and that have come before. So I really appreciate that and I appreciate all the work that he's done for the board of the museum.
Thank you, Councilman Robertson. Any other comments? Councilman Shenegas.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Timmons, neighbor, citizen, Legion member. You have come into this town and have embraced it. You have learned about the history. You have brought forth what your knowledge is and you have combined together with raising up you have combined together with raising up our war memorial at the Legion, and it's just amazing that you're a part of our community. Thank you, and I look forward to having you serve on, I recommend you to serve on our Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Shenegas for the appointment of Mr. Thomas Timmons to the Historic Preservation Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. Motion to appoint Mr. Thomas Timmons to Historic Preservation Commission, care six zero, six zero, and the affirmative. Thank you very much, counsel. And to the Historic Preservation Commission, I do have to administer the oath of office, so if I could ask Mr. Timmons, and any guests that he has here with him, if you want to join me in the well, we'll swear at you. Mr. Timmons, congratulations on being voted on the Historic Preservation Commission. We're going to take a brief, we're going to have you give a brief oath of allegiance, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to say the word aye, and I'm going to ask you to repeat the word aye and also say your name. Please raise your right hand, sir. Aye?
Aye, Thomas Timmons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
I will fulfill.
The requirement.
Requirement.
For the office I'm about to assume.
The office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
Bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
Support the laws.
Support the laws.
Constitution thereof.
The Constitution thereof.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
As a member of.
As a member of.
Historic Preservation Commission.
Historic Preservation Commission.
For the city of Haverty Grace.
For the city of Haverty Grace.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Hold on, sir. Congratulations.
Yeah, I could bring home a gift.
Thank you very much, everybody. Sorry about the wait, but everyone that joins the Historic Preservation Commission gets a Haverty Grace flag, and we had to, we had to get Haverty Grace flag, so. Thank you, Adam, for going to get one, so appreciate it. And congratulations again to Mr. Timmons. Council President, did you want to take a quick break now? Okay, the time is now, 8:27, we'll adjourn in five minutes, and we'll start off with recognition proclamations and a presentation with the Water and Sewer Commission, so. All right, five-minute break, thank you very much.
Ten seconds. Okay, everybody, we are continuing our February 18th council meeting after a brief recess. On the agenda, we left off with item number nine, recognitions. This evening, we have no recognitions, item 11, proclamations, we have no proclamations. That takes us to item 11. Presentations, this evening, we have a presentation from the Water and Sewer Commission. It's the annual Water and Sewer Commission report, and the commission chair, Mr. Dan Wuscinich, is going to present it. Dan, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council President, Council, thank you for having us. This evening, I'll represent our annual report. If I find the buttons. And we will start with the important piece, the money. Our funds available represent our operating revenue plus other revenues. This is going to be a slide that I spend some time on, because this is the important piece. All our revenues totaled to $10 million for fiscal year '24. Our spending with respect to capital usage was on debt services for close to $3 million, and then 6.7 million on capital projects for a total usage of 9.6. You subtract the second total from the first, and we get a positive net profit for fiscal year '24. Add that to the carryover from the previous year, and we end up with a fund balance at the end of '24 of $1.7 million, which is very good. So the health of Fund IX as of the close of fiscal year '24 was very good. However, you know, I always have a however. If everyone will be familiar with this, but I'm going to belabor it, if we look at that slide, the operating profits at the top, which is the revenue from the water and sewer rates minus the cost to make water and process the sewage. The operating profits, they're year over year. The CCRF, that's a very important piece of these revenues, and they come from building permits, the connection fees. And then the infrastructure replacement fee, that's a fee that is charged regularly every quarter in the bill, which is just over three quarters of a million dollars. Those are the three revenue streams that we can count on. The next two lines, the bond proceeds grants and the ARPA funds, they're transitory. ARPA, that's done, and the bond funds were almost done, or soon will be, or we have allocated the last of the bond bill for the $15 million that we have. So revenues going forward from bond proceeds will be zero unless we get additional debt or there are some grants. Grants usually are not a material mover to this number. If you remove those numbers, you would see, just noodling it, that the total revenue that we can count on is $4.7 million a year. If we look at our capital expenditures, we have a debt obligation that we must pay of 2.9. If we remove that from the revenue with surety, the 4.7, we end up with $1.8 million to spend on capital improvements. That's insufficient. If you go back to the Black and Beach Report of 2017, at that time, they were recommending $3 to $4 million a year. If we escalate that, probably up around $5 million a year. So you see right away that without a robust CCRF number or any debt to pay for a robust SIP or an appropriate-sized SIP, we will not be able to fund the appropriate capital projects that we need to move forward. I'll be referring to that throughout the presentation. So this slide is good news. We made a profit, and we added it to the profit from previous years. And then there's the not-so-good news that without continuing debt and servicing that debt, we're not going to be able to support a strong capital improvement program. Additionally, that reinforces this slide. The CCRF is heavily relied upon. In the fiscal year '24, we had budgeted 100 water connections, 100 sewer connections. We were very fortunate in '24, ended up with 166 and 160 respectively. We ended up with a variance, a positive over budget of 66 and 60 connections. So that gave us a variance of almost $1.2 million that was not budgeted for. That was a very good year. In 2025, the year that we're currently in, things are looking positive. So it looks like we will have a good CCRF revenue coming in. So that will help support, obviously, paying our debt service and contributing to a good nominal amount of capital projects being completed in this year, in fiscal '25. Back to fiscal '24. I'd just like to recognize the effort that Mr. Mayor and Council, that you put forth. Real quick, that was increasing the CCRF by 8%. That was very important and helpful. Your support toward public outreach to keep the public aware of Fund IX, both the good and the bad, and also your focus on economic development for the city, particularly attracting water users, and that would be commercial and industrial, would be our higher water users, and that would help increase our revenue. Also, your support for the capital improvement program, the SIP. I want to thank you for that, that is very important. And then also your pursuit of additional revenues through, one, pursuing Harford County to try to sell water to them the way we used to, and also back in '24, your successful pursuit of Aberdeen as a water customer. I didn't advance the slide, there's the slide that has all those words on it, I apologize. For fiscal year '25, the current year, the tasks at hand were the same for fiscal year '24, so I won't repeat them. However, in addition to fiscal year '24, fiscal year '25, we had an inclusion of understanding and embracing the need for debt to support a CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, which is why I belabored the chart with the income and the profit. The coming fiscal year, fiscal year '26, the challenges. There are three basic challenges. The first one has to do with the comprehensive plan and the development opportunities that would support additional revenues to Fund IX. This directly impacts the revenue that we get on the CCRF, the capital recovery fee. That is important. Also, the focus on economic development to enhance other revenues for Fund IX. And then finally, the other challenge, it's rather wordy up there, but it comes down to, without a robust revenue stream for the CCRF, we will need debt to compensate for that. And we also have to bear in mind that the CCRF is also used to pay for the debt obligation. Recommendations for fiscal year '26. First recommendation, the commission is recommending that Black and Beach should be engaged to refresh their 2017 report with a focus on recommendations for rate and fee amounts and structures. Recommendation number two, basically is to continue the focus on improving the material condition of the water and sewer systems, and that's the capital improvement program. Recommendation number three, debt service. Under the current debt repayment model, the intended revenue sources for debt is the CCRF. The CCRF requires 135 connections in the coming fiscal year in order to cover our debt obligations and break even. Recognizing the number of connections needed, the administration must continue its practice of realistically estimating the annual connections in the budget. Recommendation number four, increase the IRF to help compensate for the inflation experienced by the large-scale projects in the CIP. Current capital projects have experienced unprecedented inflation of up to 50% in recent past. Going forward, Fund IX will experience residual high costs consequently, and an increase to the IRF of at least 8% for all meter classes, as recommended. Number five, the Director of Public Works should continue to update the CIP annually and seek all capital improvement grant opportunities. Recommendation number six, the commission is deeply concerned with annual cumulative effects of inflation on Fund IX's sustainable revenue requirements. To address this issue, the commission strongly recommends the implementation of a legislatively mandated annual rate increase to meet the annual increases in operation costs to maintain raising employee and chemical costs. Inflation rate increases should be imposed even in years when the increase is small. This mitigates the detrimental effect of compounding inflation rates over time. Routinely increasing rates to keep up with operating costs helps avoid allocating funds intended for the CIP over to operations. The administration should also be sensitive to any pressure to use water and sewer rate revenue to service debt. And the final recommendation, seven. As a result of the city's debt capacity, I'm saying limitations, it's not a true limitation, the commission recommends the city works with state legislators to pursue state funding of water and sewer infrastructure repairs and improvements. That's our presentation, thank you for your attention. Any questions?
Dan, thank you very much. Any questions? Councilmember Robinson.
Thanks. Firstly, Dan, thank you for all that you do. I know that you've been intimately involved with this commission, much to your ire at some times for years now, so thank you for your professionalism in this. For number six, is there a particular percentage that you have in mind for rate increases to be amortized? I mean, I assume that you don't want to go with just like a general CPI.
No, that would be actually wrong to go with the general CPI, because for the number of years that I've been on the commission, working first with George DeHoody and now Abdul, usually the rate of increase that we see for Fund IX is less than the typical CIP. So what we are suggesting here is each year, the finance director, Director Finance, determines exactly what the inflationary amount was for Fund IX operations, and only increased the rate by that amount. And in the past, we found that it actually is slightly below or well below the CIP. Now, that said, there obviously would be a year or two that you would encounter where that inflation rate would be greater than CIP, because there was some kind of an event that occurred within the city, either around labor costs or around costs like chemicals, if there was some kind of abnormal spike in chemical costs in a given year. And it was known that that was not going to come down. So we're not saying that this would just be an automatic blind thing, it would be rationalized, but we're saying that once you determine what the rationalized number is, that it be imposed, because even if the rate is 1%, let's say the CIP was 2.5, and we determined the rate for Fund IX was 1, you say, ah, let's not increase it this year because it's so small. That 1% then is compounded forever, and you would have to do a pretty good step change to compensate for that, because what that says is it's costing us 1% more to operate the water and sewer plant, but we don't have that revenue coming in. That means we had to not do something. And there's where the damage is done, by paring back and not doing something.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for, that was a good question, thank you.
Any other question?
No, just a comment, I want to echo Councilmember Robinson's remarks too. Again, thank you for your professionalism. I see Fred Willis is in the audience tonight, thank you for being here, Fred, provide support. Thank you for being here, Fred, providing support. And you'll see some legislation come from me, pertains to item six and item number four.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Any other comments for Dan? Yes.
What role do you see your committee having in the review of that inflationary rate?
What I would suggest is that the Finance Director would go through a formal determination of what that inflation rate was, present that to the Commission, that would probably be November timeframe, where a rationalization could go, could occur, before he presented to you, and we would, that recommendation then, coming to Council and the Mayor, would have attached to it a communication from the Commission explaining why we believe that's an appropriate rate that should be voted on.
Yeah, and I recognize I'm overly optimistic person, but just to ask it, what happened, what would happen if there was a scenario where it all doesn't cost as much?
Oh, then I'm all for a negative increase.
Okay.
Remember, I also, I also pay a water bill.
Okay.
I'm just not here saying raise rates, raise rates. I would like my water bill to also come down.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Well, Dan, I'm very grateful for your time. I'm very grateful that you presented this report very clearly and cogently to the citizens of Haverde Grace. And I see you got your partner in crime back there, Mr. Wills, for emotional support this evening. And like I say, it's, thank you for rendering the annual report, and we look forward to working with the Commission and acting upon some of his recommendations.
You're welcome. And the other Commission members are more than just support. They do a heavy lift also.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We appreciate it, Dan.
And Abdul.
And thank you, Fred. Fred, we appreciate all you do in the Water and Sewer Commission.
Okay, we're going to go to item 12 resolutions. Item 12A, Councilmember Shenegas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce calendar resolution concerning a license agreement for replacement signs in Bayview Estates.
Thank you. Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas and a second by Councilmember Robertson. This is a motion to introduce a calendar resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce calendar resolution carries six zero and affirmative. This is a resolution by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace, Maryland pursuant to the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the City Charter for Approval of License Agreement to Replace Signs in Bayview Estates on City Right-Away. Council, this will be given the number, Resolution 2025-05, 2025-05. Council will have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Council President.
So, the current sign, it's on Chapel Road right there, right at Chapel and Tidings. It's been there since like 1994, and it is the ugliest sign. It's about the size of like a notebook or something, and it looks like, it literally looks like a tombstone, and it says Bayview Estates. And so, they got a real nice one coming up now, planned and everything, so I, for one, am very happy with the change. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes, I agree. This grandiose sign, 72 inches in length and 32 inches in width, with a picture of the lighthouse, that will no longer be alongside Chapel Road, but on the entrance into the area, one on Tidewater Drive and Goforth Drive. They will look nice, they will look beautiful, they will not be a problem when driving, they will, they will just definitely enhance the Bayview Estates, so I'm all in favor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions or comments? Council, we're going to do a roll call vote on Resolution 2025-05. Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booger.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Our roll call vote is six zero and the affirmative. City Council Calendar Resolution 2025-05 is adopted by Council. We're going to go to item 13, ordinances. Item A, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce ordinance concerning approving a lease agreement with Chesapeake Heritage Conservancy for the Skipjack Martha Lewis in the first reading.
Second. Second.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas, seconded by the Council President. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance concerning a Skipjack Martha Lewis lease is approved, six zero and affirmative. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33, 34, and 36 of the Haverde Grace City Charter to approve a dock lease between the City and Chesapeake Heritage Conservancy Incorporated for the use of Hutchins Park Pier. Council do have a motion to adopt this ordinance, which will be known as Ordinance 1176, 1176.
So moved.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments?
I just kind of wish that the, that the team was still here. I had a couple of questions for them, but I was kind of looking at what their five-year plan was going to look like, and 300K worth of repairs, and how long is, how long is that going to be, you know, I mean, how long is that wooden vessel going to be in service before we, it becomes a St. Michael's dry dock type situation, you know? And you could still educate and do all the things that a 501(c)(3), you know, would do with a vessel, but I was just kind of curious as to what their plan was. Maybe I'll just reach out to them separately in that case. And this lease agreement, I didn't see it in there. How long, how long was this good for?
It's good for one year.
It's good, and then it renews next year?
It's not an automatic renewal. It'll have to come back before Council. That was done intentionally, because we do have a grant, as you heard from the presentation, there is some work that's going to be done on Hutchins Park Pier, and we don't know what that is going to look like. And ideally, we don't want to exclude the Martha or anything like that, but because that work isn't going to be done until next year, we decided to make this for a one-year lease, so that way, we'll be able to make a more educated decision next year.
Thanks, Dr. Rick. I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Booger. Any other questions or comments? Council, this is Ordinance 1176 on first reading. Roll call vote. Councilmember Booger.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Our roll call vote is six zero and affirmative. Ordinance 1176 is adopted on first reading. There will be a public hearing on Ordinance 1176 at the next Council meeting, March 3rd, 2025, at the start of the Council meeting at 7:00. Any objections, Council President?
That's perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Item B on this evening's ordinance was removed at the beginning of the meeting, and that moves us to the next item, amending Chapter 102. Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce ordinance concerning amending Chapter 102 landscaping, sustainable, regarding scope and definitions in the first reading.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Council President. This motion to introduce an ordinance. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. This will be known as Ordinance 1177, 1177, an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Haverde Grace City Charter to amend Chapter 102 landscaping and sustainable. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1177 on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Council President.
I apologize. Mr. Mayor, if I could have the city attorney comment on exactly why we are amending this ordinance?
Ms. Sishek.
Yes, Council President. In reviewing a recent application of Section 102, it came to my legal review that unlike other provisions of the city code, this particular section did not have a definition for redevelopment and what that meant in connection with the landscaping requirements. And the way it was being applied would include simply changing in use of a building, even if you were going to repurpose and reuse an existing parking lot. So, it's to clarify that if you're not redeveloping the property within the definition, that landscaping will not apply to that particular property.
So, this change will bring it to what the Council originally intended when it was passed the first time?
That's my understanding, based on my conversations with individual Council members, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Booger.
That actually was the same question I was going to ask. I appreciate that, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, April.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer.
Just to, again, clarify things. Repurpose of a building means that they're not going to expand the footprint, right?
Well, if they're expanding the footprint to such a degree that they require a site plan, then landscaping requirements kick in. But sometimes, we have buildings along Route 40 that have been sitting vacant for years. I'm not going to point them out, but if somebody wanted to come in and just put in a new restaurant, or put in a tire store in an existing vacant building, the way the code was being interpreted by staff would have required somebody coming in, I want to change this little garage here to a tire store, oh, you've got to put in landscaping because you're redeveloping the property. There was no definition of redeveloping the property, and so, this just clarifies that you would either require a site plan, or you're disturbing the land, where you're tearing it up. If it's not part of your process to go in there, if you're a startup entity, you're a mom and pop, you want to put a tire store, and you're not tearing up, you're using existing parking, you're just restriping parking, then you're not going to be required to fulfill the 102, what I call the Section 102 landscape. But if you need a site plan, if a site plan is required, where you're disturbing, you're adding 5,000 or so square feet, whatever the site plan requirement is, then you would. So, that, it doesn't change that part of it, it just clarifies what redevelopment means. And I think it's, it's common sense for somebody buying a property of being able to, if they're not making any major changes, that you not have to have additional capital in order to start having your business in that property. Well, and that would, that would further the purpose of Council to have properties during Long Route 40, whether they're vacant or they're currently being used or not being used, and whatever the state they're in, that they could be filled, that they're no longer vacant. So, the idea is to make it easier for existing parcels that are already out there, to maybe someone could come in and occupy them and run a business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions? This is going to be Ordinance 1177, first reading, roll call vote. Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booger.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones. Roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative. Ordinance 1177 is adopted on first reading, and Council President. March 3rd. March 3rd. Ordinance 1177 will be right after a public hearing on Ordinance 1176. Thank you. Item D, concerning height, lot, and yard requirements, first reading. Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move to introduce ordinance concerning amending Chapter 205 zoning regarding height, lot, and yard requirements in the first reading.
Council, I have a motion and I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Shenegas, and it's seconded by the Council President Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution and Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Haverde Grace City Charter, amend Chapter 205 zoning. This will be known as Ordinance 1178, 1178. Council, I have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Council President.
Again, Ms. Sishek, this is, as before, removing any vague issues that we had with definitions?
Yes, in this one, it had the odd statement in the particular zoning provision, it has, it carves out an exception for the historic district. What happened in rereading that section, there's, there was an anomaly in the section that said, the maximum setback is to be five feet. Well, as we know, throughout the historic district in Haverde Grace, which stretches most of downtown, we have many properties that have more than five-foot setbacks. So, this provision clarifies that it's not so much the maximum setback that we were concerned, or that Council was concerned about, based on my conversations with Council members, but it was consistency within the historic district. So, the language proposed, and it's subject to modification by Council to clarify the intent, but the language proposed is to make it so that the director can look at the neighborhood and see where the historic line is. If there is no historic line, there should be nothing preventing the director from allowing the already existing setbacks to go into place. So, for example, in single-family, in all residential districts in the city, you can have a, the setback, the minimum setback, not maximum, minimum setback is 15. So, the idea is, in the historic districts, you might want it less. Bourbon Street's an example, where the houses come really close to the city line, but normally, that would be a 15-foot setback. But in other places in the city, downtown, historic district, you have 15-foot or more setbacks. So, it gives the director the latitude to make it match the particular community, and it cleans up the language which seemed to restrict that discretion.
Thank you.
And I, I think I also added a provision, I'll have in front of me, that says the, yes, in, in item C, to make it clear that anybody who has a dispute with the director's decision on where that line should be, then it would be, go to the, could be appealed right to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Ms. Sishek. Councilmember Boyer.
I just want to say that I am strongly in favor of it. When we were first discussing this, when Shane was our Director of Planning, my street was identified as one of those examples. When I built my house, while I could have put it more forward, it didn't make any sense because it needed to be in line with everybody else along the street. And we have a couple of locations, we are in Washington Street, where it's odd because there's a house that is further back than the rest of it, and it just doesn't create that consistency of the street. I am very, I mystified why we had to actually get to this level of clarity because of the level of discussion that we had when we originally passed the legislation. But if it's necessary in order to make it clear that we, what we need to create is a consistent look and feel throughout the city, then I am highly in favor of making this as specific as possible, and making sure that it is on the record, that whoever is the next Director of Planning, that they have the responsibility to create that look and feel, and if there is ever any questions, I want to, would highly encourage that person to not only reach out to the Mayor, but also to the rest of us on City Council, and quite frankly, the community at large, for feedback or input into it on what would be best for the community. I realize that they are in a position of power and of decision-making, but what they're doing is creating something that will be enduring for generations, and if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Any other questions or comments? Okay. And thanks, Ms. Sishek. Appreciate your clarity. Council, this is Ordinance 1178, which is going to be a roll call vote. Council, this is ordinance 1178, which is gonna be a roll call vote, first reading. Councilmember Shenegas?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Booger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
A roll call vote of six zero and affirmative. City ordinance 1178 concerning Chapter 205 zoning regarding height, lot, and yard requirements is adopted on first reading. Council President, what do you think?
March 3rd.
March 3rd. On March 3rd, we will have the public hearing on 1176, 1177, and 1178, all preceding the council meeting. So, March 3rd, 7 o'clock, here at City Hall. Council, that does it for the ordinances. Now we're gonna go to item 14, old business. This evening, we have no old business. Item 15, new business. We've got some new business here, and we're gonna hand it off to Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, for your consideration, this evening, we have three events. They are all events that have occurred in the past, so is a consent calendar appropriate? Council President?
Yes, sir.
So, we have First Fridays, May 2nd, June 6th, July 4th. You will notice there's a question mark on there. We are asking for approval for July 4th, and we'll make a determination on if we're actually having a First Friday on July 4th at a future date. August 1st, September 5th, October 3rd, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And it's downtown, and it will be the usual First Friday footprint, because the construction will have been completed by then. The Pride of Baltimore II visit, May 3rd through 4th at Hutchins Memorial Park, and the Corpus Christi Eucharistic procession, June 22nd, 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Start and end at St. Patrick's Church, and it proceeds down Congress, Washington, and Pennington. Thank you.
Okay, council, I have a motion to adopt by consent counter.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Booger. Seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments? Yes.
Just double-checking on the, in regards to the Pride visit, does that mean they will, is, are this, is the time that they're gonna be open, or is this the time they're actually going to arrive in Haverty Grace?
So that, my understanding is that is the entire time they will be in Haverty Grace. So they will come in on the 3rd, leave, be here for the 4th, and then leave.
They'll come in at the, in the morning of the 3rd?
I'm not sure what time, but so.
It says 10 a.m. here, arrival. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so then they would be coming in the morning.
Okay. Tracking, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyer? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Consent counter approved, six zero and affirmative. Thank you, council. And we're gonna go to item 16, report from the directors, and we're gonna start off with Director Administration, Dr. Chris Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President, council, directors, citizens that are still here with us, and citizens at home. I do have one matter of business to bring before the council. So the Langston Hughes Oratorical Contest was originally scheduled for February 8th at the Opera House, and they wound up having to cancel because of weather, and they reached out to administration. They want to reschedule, obviously, that's an event that we wanna have. However, the Opera House is completely rented out. There is no opportunity to put them in there. There is opportunity on the 23rd at the Star Center, but the challenge that we have before us is the fee schedule that's currently approved by council only gives that group a discount for use of the Opera House. It does not give them a discount for use of the Star Center. So they're requesting to be able to use the Star Center for the same price that it would've cost them to use the Opera House. And so I have those numbers for you. In total, it would've cost them $1,020 to use the Opera House, so that would be waiving of the rent, but there are cleaning fees, tech fees, house manager fees, microphones, and so the total for that would've been $1,020. For the Star Center, the total is $2,675, and largely, that's due to the additional cost of the rent for the larger facility, and also the cleaning fees are much higher for the Star Center, because it is a larger facility. So I say all that to say this, the organization is requesting that the city waive $1,655 of the fees that they would have to pay at the Star Center, and that would make them, what they would wind up paying out of pocket, the exact same as what it would've been if they were at the Opera House. So in order to do that, though, the city council does need to, you know, make a motion and whatnot, because administration just doesn't have the authority for that.
Council President?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we allow the oratory group to have the Star Center waiving the $1,655 to bring them down to $1,020 for that date on the 23rd.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any questions on this? Okay, all those, I'm sorry, Councilmember Boyer?
What costs, like, what costs are, like, that $1,020? Will that cover the greater majority of, the actual, like, the, I'm thinking the, the cost for the cleaning, right? The cost for, I mean, there's things that we can absorb, but the things that actually have, like, hard costs that go with it, does it cover?
I get, I get what you're saying. No, it doesn't. So that, like I said, the big difference is, the cleaning fee is $475 for the Star Center, the cleaning fee for the Opera House is $175, so ultimately, the city would be eating 300 of that. The tech fee is actually a little bit cheaper at the Star Center, it's $25 difference, so at the end of the day, you're talking $275 of fees that the city would, I guess, likely be paying for, because they're mandatory fees that have to, have to occur in order for that facility to be used.
So go again. So the, the cleaning fee is how much?
$475 for the Star Center, and $175 for the Opera House.
And the technical cost fee?
$525 for the Opera House, and it is $500 for the Star Center.
So.
So the difference between those, two 75.
So the actual, like, that, our outlay of money that are hard costs is $990, but we will be receiving $1,020?
Correct. The city, the city would receive the same $1,020.
Okay. Tracking, thank you.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. The relocation for the Langston Hughes Oratorical Contest is approved from the Opera House to the Star Center, correct? Okay, awesome, excellent. It's approved, six zero and affirmative. Dr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to, speaking of the Star Center, I did wanna offer congratulations to every person that was working on the upgrades to that facility. There were many people that attended the Almost Queen Concert, I was one of them there. I wound up getting the second-to-last pair of tickets that were available for sale, so I was all the way in the back, but I was actually very impressed, the, the sound quality is very good there, the seats are wonderful, it looks amazing, and I know there was an incredible amount of hard work that went into that to make sure it was all done in time for the concert. So just thank you to everybody that was working on that project. It was, it was a great success. I do also wanna offer congratulations to Chief, our Police Department lately, and I don't know how much can be shared, but I'll just say that based on some of the briefings that I've been a part of, the Police Department has done some really good police work. They always do good police work, but some very impressive stuff as of late, some very impressive arrests that were made. So, good work to you and your team, Chief. I did talk to Ben Marderana, the Acting Director of Planning, to see if he had anything he would like me to share. He did say yes. He said that he wants everybody to know that he is working diligently with Human Resources to find his replacement, and we do actually have two very promising interviews scheduled for this Friday, for applicants for that role. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment on, it has been so nice having so many, so many members of the citizens, like, join us for not just council meetings, but commission meetings, and coming out to kinda see how everything works and what we do, and it's kinda nice having you all there, instead of us just being crammed in a room, just, you know, making the sausage. So, thank you for doing that, thank you for coming out and being an active part. And that concludes my comments for the evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. And we're gonna go to our Director of Economic Development Tourism, Ms. Bridget Johnson. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens in the audience, and citizens at home. I have a few updates this evening. One, speaking of audience attendance, each month, I may tell the date and time when we have EDAB and TAB, and each month, more citizens are showing up for our meetings. So the EDAB meeting, Economic Development Advisory Board meeting, is tomorrow here in council chambers at 4:00 p.m. And the Tourism Advisory Board meeting is also tomorrow here in chambers at 10 a.m. So both of these meetings are open to the public, and we look forward to seeing you. Thank you, council, for approving our First Fridays application, event application. We will have the application for the vendors available Monday, March 3rd, on explorehavertysgraceMD.com. We are changing the application a little bit, have to run a couple of things by the mayor, and then we'll have that application available to the public. We received a $25,000 grant from DHCD for the Main Street program. So I would like to, in the future, use some of this funding. It can only be used in the Main Street area, so for more marketing and promotion of the downtown and possible business attraction, we have a couple of vacant properties, and this funding can be used for any of those types of activities, along with possible capital improvements, but $25,000 isn't a lot of money, so we'll see if we can come up with something good. It has to be spent by October 4th, but I was happy with my department for securing that funding. The tourism grant through the county, the Harford County Tourism Grant, the application will be available, they said during the month of March, so I don't have the date yet, but there will be new guidelines for the application, and hopefully, they're a little bit more flexible with municipalities applying for the funding. So as soon as we have the guidelines, I'll share those with Chris and the Star Center as well, to see, you know, what we can apply for. I always say, the city of Haverty Grace, we don't have a lot of hotels, but we certainly are a driver of hotel and overnight stays in Harford County, so we will pursue that grant funding with a furry. Next is youth sports. It was really nice to hear about the youth sailing school tonight, amongst other things that's going on. We have a meeting next week with the Youth Commission, and we are in the process of at least trying, or planning, or seeing what we can do about having a pickleball tournament in the fall for the youth. The adults and the professionals have other courts throughout the county that they can use. Those courts are inside, you know, air-conditioned and heat. Our courts are outside, with the exception of the one at the Star Center, so we're gonna try and do something a little different, of course, with approval. So once we have those details worked out, we'll be, look forward to coming before, you know, council, and seeing what we can accomplish. And last but not least, oh, Harford County government. It was nice to hear a lot about the Route 40 corridor tonight as well, because our partner, the Economic Development Office up there, as well as the city of Haverty Grace and the city of Aberdeen, and we met with them last week, how they focus on the redevelopment of the Route 40 corridor. I know we've been hearing that for many, many decades, but there has been some changes, some really visible changes over the past two or three years, and as we are fixing, you know, some things within our code as well, I just see this as a great opportunity for us, whether we're partnering with incentive programs, or any type of marketing, or anything along those lines, talking with State Highway about fixing the median and making it more aesthetically pleasing, so those are the type of things that we're partnering with our sister agencies to focus on the redevelopment of the Route 40 corridor. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Any questions for Bridget? Thank you very much for your report, appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Abdi, or Director of Finance.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens of Haverty Grace. We'll start with the financial condition of the Journal Fund, our Fund One, a major fund. The fund balance currently stands at $6,354,900, which is down $864,800 since my last reporting. Fund balance, beginning fund balance has not changed, and currently stands at $2,349,600. Revenues to date is $19,509,100, which is up $357,800. Expenditures to date is $15,585,800, which is up $1,222,600. The Water and Sewer Fund, our Fund Nine, fund balance currently stands at $6,550,700, which is up $538,500. Beginning fund balance has not changed, and currently stands at $1,746,800. Revenues to date, $14,620,20, which is up $1,107,600. Expenditures to date stands at $6,000, I'm sorry, $9,816,100, which is up $569,100, sorry, $569,100. My last Fund Marina Fund Eight, the fund balance currently stands at $1,105,000, which is down since my last reporting of $8,600. Beginning fund balance has not changed, it currently stands at $761,900. Revenues to date, $71,100, which is down $800 since my last reporting. Expenditures to date stands at currently $362,500, which is up $7,800 since my last reporting. That concludes the fund financial positions for those three funds, and thank you, Mayor, and council members.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Director of Finance? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Conway, Director DPW.
Mr. Mayor, council, Thursday, we had our annual wastewater treatment plant operations inspection from MDE, and we passed with flying colors, actually. I'll have that inspection report late this week, early next week, once I get it, I'll forward it to everybody so they can, so they can read it. The city, in the last 20 years, has done an outstanding job every year with an annual tree care program, and, you know, because of this, you, you can tell when we had the winds that came through here late Sunday and into Monday, I mean, it's minimal, minimal damage, and I, you know, I think that goes a long way, because, you know, we do this every year to minimize problems. I took a ride through Aberdeen Monday, and it looked like, it looked like a war zone through there, so, so, you know, hats off to, to everybody here on the dais who approves the yearly budget for the trees, the maintenance program, it goes a long way, and that's all I have.
Yes.
So, this time of year, might be a good time, but can you talk about what people can do in regards to the increasing amount of ivy that's seen growing up on the trees in order to protect them moving forward?
Yeah, the easiest thing, the easiest way to eradicate it is, if you have like a real nice, nice pair of landscape clippers, and just, it's a little tedious, just go around a tree with that, just make the cut, give it like a little space between, you know, where you cut it below or above, and like, within a couple weeks, it'll die out. You could see that, that Lindsey and Charlie Jones on the, right there on the Corner Revolution in Market did the same thing a few weeks back, and now it's all brown, so that's, that's the easiest way to do it. And then sometimes, every couple of years, you've just gotta stay up on it, you know, until it just stops growing.
And the importance is, because, the importance of doing this for the trees is?
Because it kills the trees. Yeah. That's the bottom line, it kills the trees.
No, and we can't expect, I don't think it's possible for DPW to be able to, be able to hit all of it, so if we could each do our part in looking out for the trees that are on our lawns and just cut away the ivy?
Absolutely.
That would be extremely helpful.
Absolutely.
And if they have any questions on how to do it, call into your office.
Give me a shout.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Conway? Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Good evening, Chief.
Mayor, good evening, council members and citizens. Just one thing, so the ICE Festival is Saturday, so we will be out early. So the no parking will be posted. Joe's crew does a great job. And so, the posting will be from 7:00 AM on Saturday morning, so we will be out there, hopefully not having to tow any cars, but I'm sure there's going to be a few. So just, if you live in the downtown area or if you're eating breakfast or anything, if you're going to be on Washington Street, Pennington, St. John's Street, Franklin, just pay attention to the signage. Patience with the parking, there's going to be a lot of people down there. I was actually in Lancaster, and I saw a billboard in Lancaster advertising our ICE Festival. So, it caught my eye. Haverty Grace kind of stuck out. So, anyway, use caution, be attentive, especially for pedestrians, there's going to be a lot of foot traffic. So, that's it. I think the weather's going to be nice, so we're looking forward to the event, but just make sure you pay attention to the no parking signs.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate the update. Thank you, sir. We're going to just quickly roll over here. We're going to do updates from the mayor. Not a whole lot of updates, other than, you know, mention billboards. It's funny when I talk to people who come to our events or to the concerts at the Star Center, I ask them, how'd you find out about it? They always say, "Billboards." And I'm like, you know, "You're not one of the 50,000 people that viewed our Facebook page?" You know, like, it's like, but, you know, nothing beats an old billboard on the side of the road, and it's old-fashioned advertising, so thanks for letting me know that we're up in, I knew we were up in that area, but I've never seen it, but thanks for letting me know that, at least we're getting what we paid for, right? Yeah. So, yeah, we, we were really hoping to have the, the brick pavers down by the time we had the ICE Festival on Washington Street this year, by this weekend, but some weather delays and things have kept that going, so just, you know, just be careful when you're walking. You know, it's, we're glad it didn't snow tomorrow, or Thursday, because we really can't plow Washington Street. It's got so many bumps and holes in it, so it's, we're probably better off not getting all that snow. And so, the ICE Festival, we're looking at, you know, highs and low 40s on Saturday, so the ICE should be able to survive pretty well. Man, last year, the ICE Festival was just off the hook. I think people had cabin fever, and they were so excited to get out. It was one of the biggest crowds I've ever seen in the city, so we're, you know, we're hoping people come out, you know, bring the kids, and there's things all over the place. There's stuff going on at the Star Center and Opera House, and all the businesses will be open, and it'll be a lot of fun for people. So the weather should be on our side. Like Chief said, be mindful where you park. You know, honestly, I tell people all the time, the entire city of Haverty Grace is a parking lot. Just don't park in front of a red curb or a yellow curb or a fire hydrant. You know, it's just, it's mostly, mostly public parking, you know? So, but with that said, you know, we're still thinking we're on track for, for March, end of March, probably get the downtown finished. We're going to be doing the sidewalks on the next block up where the wine bar is and Java by the Bay pretty soon, and then we'll start from the Five Points, walking, working our way up with the, with the brick paver streets. And then, you know, then we'll start getting serious with the flora and fauna, with the trees and the plantings and all the things that are going to make all the special touches. So we're very excited about our downtown project, and we're very grateful for the patience our citizens have had while we're doing this, once in a generation, not even generation, once in a century improvement to this historic district. If you know the history of Haverty Grace, you know, there's, you know, highs and lows in our, in our city's history, you know, boom, boom times and bust times. You know, everyone's heard of, you know, when the canal opened up, how it brought industry and commerce to the city, or when the racetrack opened up, and then, you know, where the canal closed, and the racetrack opened up, and the racetrack closed, and all these other things. And the city, the city of Haverty Grace has endured a lot over a couple centuries, good times and bad times. And, and I feel in my heart, living here over 30 years, I mean, I know there's a lot of natives who've lived here longer, but just from the seat I'm in, I feel like we are definitely, you know, approaching a high time. The economy in our city is good, the prices of housing is good. We've had a lot of infrastructure replacement over the last decade, and water and sewer is much, a lot of streets, miles and miles of streets repaved. And we had the advent of a new high school that came to our, middle school that came to our community, performing arts centers have arrived. And one thing that's going to be happening soon that's going to change our lives for a few years is going to be that new Amtrak Bridge. So that's definitely going to change the, the way we enter our town for a few years, moving around some construction, and definitely you're going to hear it and see it for a while. But I feel very confident that we are in one of those peaks that the city experiences from time to time every century. And I really believe it is how we, as a community, a city, a government, receives these years that's going to come ahead, that's going to define the next decade and the decade after that. The things we do now are going to be very important for years to come. So I believe in what we're doing, I believe in all the investments we've made for our community. And the reason I bring this up is, tonight, you know, we've had a couple of citizens talk about some things gloomy, I mean, again, a lot of opinions were going on about things, but, and we had the water and sewer report, which was a very good, accurate report. Mr. Wusmanis did a great job, that's a good team with the Water and Sewer Commission. But, you know, we have a plan. You know, we, you know, we eat, sleep and breathe Fund Nine in this administration with the Water and Sewer. You know, it's not a pretty scenario, but no, no city in this country is sitting back lighting cigars with $100 bills that could have been used for water and sewer infrastructure. I mean, every city is struggling with water and sewer because it was a thing that came out in the late 1800s, early 1900s, and nobody ever thought these things would fail. And so, we aggressively as we can, but as reasonably as we can, try to attack these issues. So, the city, I believe, is exactly where I have hoped in my heart it would be at this time. It is doing very well, and it's going to get even better. And I thank the citizens for their faith in each other, for their volunteering, for their help, and their belief in the process. The fee schedule was mentioned earlier, and I think the council made a wise move to pull it from the agenda. You know, every year we have to reexamine the fees and check, and when I say fees, it's all kinds of fees. I mean, it's, you know, want to put a deck on your backyard fee, it's, you know, get a building permit fee, it's, it's every fee, you know, renting a community center, stuff like that, you know, launch a boat fee, things like that. But, a lot of the fees increased because the county increased or state increased their fees, we had to do it too. Some things we need to look at to figure if we need to raise them, or maybe we could lower them. You know, you never know. So, I know the councils, I think the council made a right decision pulling the fee ordinance from the agenda, and we're going to put it on the public work session next Wednesday night. Is that correct? Yeah, next Wednesday night, so, and I think council's also going to take a look at the comp plan next Wednesday night. So a couple of things going on next Wednesday night, six o'clock here at, at City Hall that the council's going to have a work session for. But, again, we are very aware of fees and taxes and water rates, and we know what everyone's paying their BGE bill. You know, just, I call myself the average Joe, I live in the average house, and the last 10 years, my BGE bill was never more than $350. It's usually about $180 to $220. I have gas, gas everything, gas, clothes dryer, gas heat, gas oven, gas water heater, and natural gas. And in the hottest summer, my bill's never more than $350, and in the coldest month, with Christmas lights, it's never more than $350. And my bill for January, using the same thermes for natural gas and the same lettrizzi, was $622. And I'm, you know, the, the wow factor, like, you know, even when, even when the state raises your taxes, they phase it in over years. You know what I mean? It's like, I don't even know how the Public Service Commission allowed them to do that. And it's all the distribution fee. Matter of fact, I'm paying less for natural gas now than I was three years ago. I'm paying 58 cents a therm. It's not the, it's not the cost of gas. You know, it's like, so, you know, we're all very aware of it, we're all paying it too, and, and we're still trying to figure out, how, how did the, how did the state let that happen? And we know, I know, water and sewer people, that the BGE has to improve their gas lines, and that costs money, but, man, that was a hit. You know, a buck seven for each therm for, for gas distribution, that is insane. It used to be like 37 cents a couple of years ago. So anyway, we're, your government is aware of it, and we're going to try to reflect those, those feelings when we attempt to address water fees and other fees like that. So, anyway, I just wanted to, let me not ramble on tonight, but sometimes people get up and they keep talking about doom and gloom, and I want everybody to know that it's not that bad. You know, I mean, we're living in some, it's, everything's going to be okay. You live in a great city, there's no other place I'd rather live and be a part of this great team, and we're going to do everything we can just to keep it great. So thank you, everybody.
We're going to go to comments from council, and we're going to start with Councilmember Shenegas.
Good evening, Mayor, council, administration, citizens in the audience and at home. It's lovely to be here this evening on this fine February night after President's Day. It's been kind of neat having a few days off with snow and here and there with holidays, so we're kind of easing into winter, and according to the Groundhog, we might have a little bit more, but we shall see. So I absolutely encourage everyone to come out to the ICE Festival. It is such an amazing event. It has been restructured over the years with the direction of where the sculptures have been, et cetera, but I do know that it's a family fun event from 12 to 7:00 PM. If you're, you know, worried about it being cold, come out at noon, take a peek, walk around, come and see all those beautiful structures that are up there from nonprofit organizations and businesses that are just out there to say, "Hey, come look what we are doing." And if you like their sculpture, take a picture with it and post it to their Facebook page, or let them know that, you know, you appreciate all that they're doing. They're out there to talk to you, and they want to see people come out and enjoy the selection that they made this year. I would also like to say that as the Star Center is a part of the new redirection of the ICE Festival, come on out. There's so many wonderful things for kids and families to do, and just look online at explorehavertygrace.com. It tells you everything that there is to do about the ICE Festival, and there's something for everyone at every age, and, you know, mostly minimal cost to anything. And, you know, just come on out, dress warm, and be ready to have a great time. I also would like to invite you to our tentative Planning Commission meeting this Thursday. It's not on the city website, but the Planning Commission has discussed that we will meet this Thursday at 6:30 PM here at City Council. So come on out and, or view online if you want to hear what we have to say. Thank you, everyone, and I hope you have a wonderful night. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas, and good evening, Councilmember Robertson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, city staff, ladies and gentlemen, still here and at home. Why are you still here? I just said goodnight to my wife. She's not waiting up for me. Just real quick, two things. March 1st at the American Legion here in Haverty Grace will be hosting a group of impatient veterans from Perry Point Medical Facility and staff, and providing them lunch in conjunction with Mission Barbecue. That's March 1st, 11:30 to 1:00. I don't think that we have enough to feed many more people outside of the group that's there than the group that's not able to come. We're going to be sending food back. But if you'd like to come and just, you know, interact with those folks, they don't get to interact with many people outside of the staff there, so it would be really nice, they'd appreciate it. And March 15th is a fundraiser and 106th birthday party for the American Legion. So it's a fundraiser for the brand-new Living War Memorial of Haverty Grace and Museum. It will be their first fundraiser, March 15th. Doors open at 5:30, and it's a USO-style show with a spinoff of Rogue Swan doing basically like USO throughout time, so think World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, and then up through the 90s. And it'll be pretty interesting. They're encouraging folks to dress in period costumes or uniforms if you have them. Light fare will be provided, cash bar and dancing. So come on out and support that. Tickets are available online on Eventbrite or at the Legion at the downstairs bar ahead of time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Good evening, Councilmember Booger.
Thank you, Mayor, council directors, citizens online or still with us. Just real quick, I just kind of want to just make sure that everybody reaches out to their fellow citizens and friends and neighbors, family. It's going to get, it's going to get cold tonight, Wednesday, tomorrow, and of course Thursday, right? It's going to dip down. A lot of citizens are cutting back on the thermostat because, because of the BGE impact. You know, I know, you know, in my house, I have a lock on the thermostat. No, I don't. Are you kidding me? I don't control nothing in my house. But I want to thank DPW, you know, in advance, because I know maybe something's going to happen, so I hope not, fingers crossed. You get like three tenths of an inch of snow maybe on, on Thursday to deal with, so thanks for that. There is, there has been some compliments come across on, on the Star Center. I think we received an email in regard to how, how well the Star Center looks with the renovation and the seats and whatnot, and no greater compliment can, can come from anyone when it comes for the people in whom you serve, right? You do something, and someone says, "Hey, thanks, that's a great idea, the water and sewer, that's a great idea, it's great." No greater compliment, so I appreciate, I appreciate all those type of comments. I think there was a, I think there's a, there's a phrase called, what, dinner and a show? I think that's what it was? Yeah, so this is a great place for dinner and a show, and it's a lot more comfortable there, you can get around a little bit easier, you don't have to say, "Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me," every time you walk, you know, out of your seat to use the bathroom or, or get a drink or anything of that nature. So, in regards to Greenway Farms Community, there's a couple of things that I want to ask tonight. One of them deals with, and Ms. Ishak, thanks for being here tonight, I want to ask about the, the rear emergency access, if there's any status change on that, and also want, any, any change to the traffic impact study in regards to Greenway Farms.
Thank you, Councilmember Booger. Actually, I was spoke, speaking with Councilmember Boyer with this earlier as well. We are currently discussing with the stakeholders, the, you know, options that we're looking at concerning the traffic impact study and the emergency access. So I can, I can't speak about the details of that, other than to say we are engaged in meetings, conversations are ongoing, and we're hopeful that we will come up with a reasonable solution that will be satisfactory to everybody.
And I really appreciate that, April, thanks so much. And in closing, I want to thank our fantastic police department, our Sub-County Host Company, our first responders, and our DPW. Did I forget somebody? No, I got them all. I got everybody. I'm good. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Booger. Good evening, Councilmember Jones.
Good evening, Mayor. No comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones, and good evening to you. And Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express my appreciation to DPW for all the hard work for the past couple of weeks with, you know, you have a crew somewhat new to know and how to, to use the equipment, but they've done a fantastic job. And kind of glad we're not getting a large amount of snow, but I, I feel secure knowing that if we do, you guys have got it covered. And I want to express my appreciation to the Water and Sewer Commission. I mean, it, when you look at what their responsibility is, it, it's not an easy pill to swallow, to have to, you know, review all of this information and to make suggestions that, you know, it's, it's increasing fees, it's not easy to do, but it's in the best interest of our community. And the people who serve on this commission are just wonderful people who, who dive into the issues and look a little bit further, and when they say that we really need to consider something, I really do respect their points of view, and I think it's something that we all as a community need to look at and maybe swallow a more difficult pill. But I really appreciate their hard work on this. I look forward to seeing the legislation that you're going to be proposing, and, you know, this, there's, there's certain things that a city government's responsible for. Making sure everybody has clean drinking water, the toilets flush, and that they are safe on their streets, those are the three most important things. Those are the three most important things, and if we're not proactive about it, and I, you know, I heard Dan, like, foot stomp on it, that, you know, one percent, if we let one percent go one year, we're going to be paying dividends on it in the future. You know, that's something we really need to take under consideration, so I thank them very much for all their hard work on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Comments from the Council President?
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens, just a couple of things. On April twelfth will be opening day for Little League, I think that's eight o'clock in the morning, so get there early because there won't be anywhere to park. That's also the city, citywide yard sales that day. So next Tuesday on February twenty-fifth, from four to eight PM, Matthew Ringsocker, who is an Eagle candidate for Boy Scouts, will be holding a fundraiser for his Eagle Scout project at Pat's Pizza, so come on out, he'll have some flyers there, just get them at the door and he gets a little certain amount of money towards his project. He'll be installing pull-up bars down at Veterans Park, they're behind Citizens Nursing Home. So this coming Tuesday, a week from today, from four to eight at Pat's Pizza, come on out and have some dinner. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, sounds good, Council President, thank you. We're going to go to item nineteen adjournment. Before I leave, Thursday night, eight o'clock, everybody tune in and watch United States Hockey Team beat the Canadian Hockey Team. So we'll settle that question once and for all, who's got the best hockey player? So anyway, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Schenegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to adjourn is approved, six, affirmative. It is nine fifty-nine. Thank you very much.